Welcome to the January 18, 2018 Business Meeting. And I'll ask the County Administrator, please take the role.
Oh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We have Mr. Chris Story here, representing County Council, and Mr. Kevin Moss here, serving as your Clerk of the Board. I'll start with a roll with Commissioner Henderson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So first off, I think I just want to find out from the Commissioners what you want to do. We talked about pulling the item on the master order. Do you want to just keep that in a public discussion realm? And do the citizen communication first, and that's separate? Or do you want to just do the citizen communication, including that?
Well, Chair, I think that due to this revelation, that perhaps we want to still have the discussion, because I really do want to have, make one recommendation, or give staff direction to help form a task force as a result of this change. So, and I think that some of the people, I would like to hear what they have to say about that, or whatever there's on their mind. So if you want to either, however you want to proceed, if you want to move that item up...
Oh, I think we should make them sit through the lighting district.
Yeah, I would suggest we move that up, and then put the lighting one behind.
Absolutely, move it up.
Let's do that.
Okay. I'm sure that Wendy has nothing else to do. So, we will. We'll move up the discussion about the master order ahead of Clackamas County Service District Number Five. I don't think it'll take that long. So first off, we'll do citizen communication. I have Les Poole and Carol Polly. Thank you for coming today.
We're pretty informal here. I think she can go first.
Oh, okay. Good morning. I'm following Paul around lately, it seems. We saw each other this morning at J-PAC, and then at the C4 Advisory Committee yesterday. I just wanted to say thank you to the Commission for the work that you're doing with the courthouse relocation issue that's coming up. It's good for you. I'm the President of Downtown Oregon City Association, so that's the hat I'm wearing today. And that is, it's a concern for us, having the courthouse go out. It's been such a great tenant, and we've been, you know, happy to have the courthouse down there. And we see lots of opportunity now, too. So our organization has actually been a finalist, a finalist for the Great American Main Street Award, and we will find out in March whether we win that or not. But we had your guest, we had Laurel Buttonam, yes, or Tuesday, at our meeting to talk about the courthouse relocation, so I want to thank you for that. And also, a different hat, so I am a candidate for Metro District Two, and I just wanted to hear from you, any, what's going on at the county, and a little bit of feedback from you, and what you would like to see from Metro, and I'll be reaching out to you too later.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Les.
Well done. Not that I critique the other speakers. A couple of things. One is, I want to thank the county for responding to a question I raised a couple of weeks back. There was an article in the paper that we've had 35,000 new residents, and I asked, well, how many jobs have we created? And it certainly wasn't a trick question, but, you know, as someone that's a transportation advocate, and looking at the same issues we're all facing, you see we've got too many people driving to work. I know folks I've interviewed that drive to Tuolleton and Sherwood and Hillsboro every day. One of them leaves at 5:30 in the morning. Is that a good use of our carbon resources, their time? And what does that say about us creating more jobs here? So everything we can do to create more jobs here, everything we can do to straighten out the mess that you inherited in Damascus, and that includes, of course, the concerns about, about the traffic I keep raising, and certainly the concerns that Shirley Morgan expressed last week on behalf of a lot of the citizens that are rural property owners. The marijuana thing's gotten out of hand, and again, I bring that up because while the revenue's great, and I don't think that marijuana's the threat to us, that the meth is, and some of the other issues, but certainly there's a lot being sent out of state, and it's illegal, and that's shining a bad light on Oregon, and really on Clackamas County. And when Shirley mentioned how many applications they have for marijuana farms, and some of the issues where, let's just say, there's folks trying to make a fast buck, and there's nothing wrong with trying to make a buck, but there's a point when you're starting to have a real negative influence on your neighbor's peace of mind. And so I know the county's going to continue to work on that. You were a leader in establishing some of the ordinances in dealing with marijuana, so while I'm not here to be anti-marijuana, I'm here to share a message that I'm sure you're seeing and hearing elsewhere. The last thing I would say is, I think it would be great if we could have some type of a very, I'll use the term sincere, serious town hall on Damascus. I've spoken with Gary Schmidt, and with some of his folks in governmental affairs. We really need to get a better picture of what's going to happen beyond the area that Happy Valley is conveniently bringing in, beyond where the sewer ends. And all these issues are things we're going to have to deal with in the next few months. These aren't going to go away, so I appreciate everyone's time and consideration, and I look forward to Carol responding to some of these things during her campaign, because these problems aren't going away. Thank you, as always.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Helbinger, Tony. How do you pronounce that?
Helbling.
I don't know where the E-er came from.
Commissioners, I'm Tony Helbling. You have my address. I work for Wilson Construction, a Canby-based company. Some of you have met me before. And today, I'm here to speak about the extension at Aurora, the runway extension. I appreciate the chance to speak to you today, but also, I'm going to speak with a couple of you later on today. I'd invite the rest of you to chat with me if you'd like to, but what I wanted to do was get a few things into the record, so I took the time to come visit with you, and I appreciate you letting me, and I am aware of the shot clock. So there's a couple myths. Well, this is the bill, and if you haven't seen the bill, I can provide it to you. The couple myths, the proposed legislation circumvents the public process. I can assure you, it does not. This has been a long-drawn-out public process, to which some of you actually participated with me at the table back in 2012. This public process has gone back as far as 1976. The master plans have been there, and the extension has always been approved. So to say that this is being supersited, supersited implies that something is going around those processes that is not open for public input. This has long been open for public input, and the decisions have been made to extend the runway. Another myth, that Aurora businesses, Aurora Airport businesses use city water and sewer without paying for it. No, and I heard another comment earlier this week when I was here. We have Marion County recorded, and Oregon Health Department monitored and approved drinking water wells, just like a lot of other people in Clackamas County and in Marion County do. I, at my home, have a well that I drink out of. The sewer connections, there are no sewer connections to any municipalities. We have county-approved septic systems, be they actually treatment plants, like Columbia Helicopters just put in a state-of-the-art system, or in, yes, we do have tanks at some of the locations up at the airport that do get pumped. This is perfectly legal and perfectly sanitary. One of the comments that was made earlier was that water is trucked to the airport, and I can explain this. Back in, 10 years ago, when we put in the county, the fire district required fire suppression systems, we built underground tanks, and the fire district down there, Rod Yoder's the chief, they wanted to use their trucks to train to connect to the fire department connections and draw water out of the river. So that's what they did. They trained to draw water out of the river, filled their trucks, brought them up, and then filled the tanks, as part of a training thing. And they continued to do that kind of training. So yes, water was trucked to the airport to fill the fire suppression system over 10 years ago. Surface transportation impact studies, yes, there have been, and I can explain that more to you, but my time's up. I respect your time. I would be more than happy to meet with any of you and talk to you about these things. Thanks.
Wow, that was good timing. So I was at the table in 2012. You can go ahead and come on back up. I mean, I don't want to make this a long-drawn-out thing. It was not a public process. We received a pack at the night of the meeting, and there was no discussion. The current process, we're not at the table. We're, you know, when they decided to look at the Aurora Airport, they drew a circle around it, and then they took off Clackamas County, and that's who were making the decisions. Our concern is it circumvents land use law. That's our concern, and we should be part of that process. We happen to be strong believers in protecting farmland, and it is being farmed, and so that's our main concern. I mean, we're not either supporting or opposing the expansion of the airport. We are opposing the process that we're not involved in. And I know that you guys aren't hooked to the sewer. You have septics, and I didn't know necessarily about a well. But anyway, so we're going to be sending a letter, which is being drafted now, addressing our concerns, and we won't be opposing or supporting. We just want to make sure that our concerns are heard. Paul.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's somewhat new to me, a little bit. I know we're drafting a letter, and I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. I do, I do want to just say that I've asked, and I voiced that on Tuesday, and I've got an email back from Mr. Leo, so I will be meeting them next week, and I want to get out to, and see exactly the land in question here that's going to be expanded on, and how and why, so I'm going to try to hook up with Mr. Helbling. Probably not this afternoon, by the way. I haven't had a chance to call you back, but perhaps later this weekend, or if I can find the time. But I think it's important to really understand. I also like to talk to the sponsor of the bill and figure out what that is, and maybe, maybe those questions will be asked or answered by Mr. Helbling this weekend, but I do hope to talk to the Charbonneau folks and understand what experiences they're having today from the airport, or negative experiences they're having, try to understand that. I did have a really good conversation with the ODA on Friday, and I was able to, I think, clear up some of these things that have been represented in a certain way, that were kind of confusing or conflicting with other things I've heard, and other things I've known, as well as the, a brief chat with the Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce, who seems to support the bill, but I haven't gotten into great detail as to what or why. So they are a huge economic driver. I think that's something we have to acknowledge, and I did talk to the Mayor of Canby, and we saw the letter from Canby. I think they have concerns, because some of the businesses that are either housed in Canby or Wilsonville have concerns. I want to get to the bottom of, not the bottom of that, but I want to find out really what employers in the Wilsonville, Canby area, that region rely upon the airport, and if they feel that they're going to be negatively impacted or positively impacted by the airport expanding or staying the status quo. And I understand there's an issue about takeoffs and landings and so forth, and if it increases safety, and that's another thing I want to talk about, we need to talk about safety, because if it improves safety, then that's something we ought at least factor. So I like what you said, Chair, as far as not opposing or supporting, and I think neutral might be perhaps, until we sort this all out, the best thing to do, but we'll talk in greater detail on Tuesday when we see a draft of the letter.
Yeah, we just think there should be a committee to look into this, rather than to just change the land use law like that, and that's our, our concern. Martha?
Yeah, it's nice to see you again. I know that you've served on the Canby City Council for a while there, too. I'd just like to echo briefly what Paul said. I think that, I'd like to hear what the businesses have to say. I want to talk to the French Prairie folks. I want to have an idea of what the issues are. Part of the issue is, if my understanding is that most of the property, well, all of the property for the expansion is in Marion County?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yeah, yeah.
The whole airport's in Marion.
The whole airport, well, I know. It's kind of like that, that line, where really, so, so I haven't even talked to my fellow Commissioners in Marion County yet to see where they are on this, so.
Yep.
And remaining neutral is, it sounds to me like that would be, you know, that would be a better way to, to go at this point, but I do want to gather more information.
Okay.
Just to, I think you asked me to sit here, because we were going to talk.
Yeah, you might.
If it's okay. There was a couple of comments you made about, there was one meeting, there weren't, there were six meetings.
I, no, I, one meeting? No. I sat at that table, went to every meeting, and there were many of them.
I was with you. I was with you. I was there, too.
Yes.
There were six, so there was one meeting, and I received my packets a long time ahead for those meetings. I'm not sure if you didn't receive your packets.
No, I did not. Clackamas County did not get them until the night of.
The public hearing meetings, the six meetings we held?
Yes.
Each night?
Yep.
Okay.
They handed them out. I, you were lucky that you got some, but they handed them out at the meeting.
Sure, okay. Another comment that you made was that Clackamas County didn't participate in the intergovernmental agreements. My recollection that Clackamas County and Wilsonville didn't approve of the outcome of the 2012 master plan, and therefore did not, chose not to sign on to the intergovernmental agreement.
That's true.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's on the record.
Well, actually, I don't know that we were not, we had a choice. It wasn't our agreement, it's Marion County. We just happen to believe that Marion, Clackamas County residents are impacted by that airport, and we wanted to voice our concerns, and we were not allowed, I don't think we were asked to sign an IGA.
And there are many Clackamas County residents that are positively impacted by that airport.
Sure.
So again, thank you for your time. I'm waiting to get shot, but I'd invite you to speak with me later today, and we'll go from there. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Okay, so now we're going to move on to discussion on the library district. So I guess I should, I should announce that the Board will adjourn as the Clackamas County Commission and convene as the Board of County, oh, we already are. We haven't changed hats yet. And the item that we're going to discuss is the proposal for a board order amending the library service district. And I, and if you walked in the room late, we're not going to do this right now. We're going to open for your comments, our comments, and we're not going to move forward on a master order change. Gladstone did, I'll read what they said. "At the request of Clackamas County, the City of Gladstone has agreed to amend the settlement agreement and change the deadline for library district master order until November." And previously, it was May. So we're not going to make any decisions on that today, but we're going to open up for public comment. Do you want to start first and say some things, or do you want me to take public comment first?
Well, you can call up the folks, and I'll just make one comment while you're, and that is that we, well, I can't say we, because we all haven't talked about it. Martha's been out, and we had some discussions, but there's been a lot of concern about changing the master order and changing the intent of the master order, and, and concerns, and I think they're, they're valid concerns, that, that perhaps operations and maintenance monies that were guaranteed in the ballot measure 3-310 would somehow be compromised. And I don't think that anyone on this Board ever had any intention of that. I know I did not. I can, I want to say that, make that perfectly clear, and we were trying to find a mechanism in which we'd actually protect that, and actually, stronger, make it more, fortify that even more so, in a sense that that shouldn't happen. That's my opinion. And so I just want to get that on the record, and I still wanted to, hopefully, as an outcome of this change, get together, I met with a lot of people in the room here, and perhaps direct staff with the support of the Board, to get a task force. I talked earlier with the Administrator with that. I think that'd be something we ought to get going as soon as possible, with the intention that somewhere in the near future, a few months out from now, today, that we come up with potentially some, some draft approaches on how to tackle this problem, both with the agreement and both with the master order change that are compatible, so people can see it all in one fell swoop versus seeing this parcelized with uncertainties out in the future. So I do want to hear from the public, so I just wanted to insert that right now on the front end.
The other thing is that we had scheduled a work session in the future, in which we were going to allow public participation, so it probably makes sense not to do that, and to have the task force that does that, because we have lots of other things to do. Okay? So let's, we got Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my remarks will be brief. I want to thank the leadership of, Lord.
The library.
The City of Gladstone, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Synapse laps. I want to thank the City of Gladstone's leadership for being flexible and allowing us this opportunity to work through these issues, and giving us that time to bring all the players to the table, and get all of the concerns that people have addressed as we go forward. They didn't have to do that, but they were willing to do so, and I think that they should be commended for that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Kathleen Drain and Ben Bryant. Hi, thanks for coming. Just tell us who you are and where you live.
I am Kathleen Drain. I am an unincorporated resident in the Sandy area, and I have been speaking with Mr. Savis in detail, but have also been submitting material to the Commissioners, trying to stress the importance that any amendment, if there is one to the master order, be as limited as possible to achieve the Oak Grove and, we hope, Gladstone combined libraries, because that seems like a very good idea, that solution, but that it be done so that no other libraries' funds would be siphoned off for capital purposes. I think it is achievable. I am very grateful for the time that has been granted now to permit this more particular attention to this issue. It was being very broadly addressed initially, but I think we can bring it back to a point where the ideals and hopes from 2008 are maintained, and finally, the Oak Grove and Gladstone libraries get their new structures. Given that we're in this state of flux right now, I don't know that I need to say anything more, but if you have a question, I'm available.
I read your material this morning, I guess an email. My only, my only concern is that we can't tell city councils how to run their budgets. That's not our...
No one's asking them to.
We don't have an ability to do that.
Not asking you to. The master order says that it shall be used for services. As long as the funds are used for services, everybody is in compliance. So it is really merely a matter of reviewing to see whether there has been compliance. No one's asking anybody to do anything different than we had initially anticipated in 2008, and I think that spirit of 2008 is still valid and workable now, and I look forward to that being achieved.
Yeah, we do have, we, at least we're pretty sure, that some cities have used some of these monies to help supplement capital, and somehow we have to kind of clean that up, and so this would be an opportunity to do that. I'd love to have the cities present that information to us, what capital they are using, or are they going to be using it in the future? And we got to know that. We don't have the ability to audit them, so we're going to have to trust that they're going to, you know, supply us the information we need.
Well, you could audit them as the library district, if you grant yourself that authority in the amended order.
Well, we do do audit annually of the district. An outside auditor audits them, but...
Yeah, it's the comprehensive annual financial report for the district that we do do.
Right.
And it's also true, too, that, you know, each and every municipality is responsible for conducting its own annual audit of its own finances and producing its own comprehensive annual financial report as well, so.
Yeah. Which, yeah, I won't add comment to that.
I will take...
There were some communities that didn't.
If I may take my last 50 seconds. The question of past performance by others should not be conjoined necessarily at this time with simply solving the Gladstone/Oak Grove issue.
I agree.
So I would hope that we keep the focus right now on the one issue, and then look long-term to the solution of the other issue.
Yeah, I think in the, in the task force, which I totally think's a great idea, we've got to set some timelines on it, but we do have communities such as Milwaukee that has to build a new library, and they're limited on who they can tax, and how can we perhaps address that? But that's a topic of discussion at another meeting, so we'll definitely have that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Bernard, and members of the Commission. I'm Ben Bryant, Assistant City Manager of Happy Valley. At the risk of, of providing some comments that you just said may be for a better meeting, I want to provide a little bit of context, and I hope you had a chance to review the letter from Mayor Chavez to Reamern, in case not. I'll go over a few things. First, let me just say that the Happy Valley Library provides some of the most important services in our community, and our library director does a fantastic job in ensuring our team meets the needs of our patrons in a cost-effective manner. Operating a library is much more than buying books and providing programs. It's critical that we maintain a safe and welcoming building with also an eye on the future. Undoubtedly, community growth, technological advances will necessitate changes to the building, so too does proper maintenance. Those take considerable resources, and the challenge becomes, how do we fund those changes and that maintenance? Similar to other libraries, you mentioned Milwaukee. Happy Valley, the library serves a much greater service area than just the city. In fact, the library service area for Happy Valley is 55,000 people, only 20,000 of whom are in the city. We're only able to provide service to that larger area because of the resources that we get through that larger service area and that allocation. And it's for these reasons that we're very supportive of allowing those dollars to be used for capital purposes. You know, it'd be, it'd be inequitable to solely use taxpayer dollars from that 20,000 folks for a building that serves that 50,000. But...
Right now, we're gonna open for your comments, our comments, and we're not gonna move forward on a master order change. Gladstone did, I'll read what they said. At the request of Clackamas County, the City of Gladstone has agreed to amend the settlement agreement and change the deadline for library district master order until November. And previously, it was May. So, we're not gonna make any decisions on that today, but we're gonna open up for public comment. Do you wanna start first and say some things, or do you want me to take public comment first?
Well, you call up the folks, and I'll just make one comment while you're, and that is that we, well, I can't say we, because we all haven't talked about it. Martha's been out, and we had some discussions, but there's been a lot of concern about changing the master order and changing the intent of the master order and concerns. And I think they're valid concerns that perhaps operations and maintenance monies that were guaranteed in the ballot measure three dash three-ten would somehow be compromised. And I don't think that anyone on this board ever had any intention of that. I know I did not. I can, I wanna say that, make that perfectly clear. And we were trying to find a mechanism in which would actually protect that and actually stronger, make it more, fortify that even more so in a sense that that shouldn't happen. That's my opinion. And so I just wanna get that on the record, and I still wanted to, hopefully, as an outcome of this change, get together, I've met with a lot of people in the room here, and perhaps direct staff with the support of the board to get a task force. I talked earlier with the administrator with that. I think that'd be something we ought to get going as soon as possible with the intention that somewhere in the near future, a few months out from now, today, that we come up with potentially some draft approaches on how to tackle this problem, both with the agreement and both with the master order change that are compatible, so people can see it all in one fell swoop versus seeing this parcelized with uncertainties out in the future. So, I do wanna hear from the public, so I just wanted to insert that right now on the front end.
The other thing is that we had scheduled a work session in the future in which we were gonna allow public participation, so it probably makes sense not to do that and to have the task force that does that, because we have lots of other things to do. Okay? So, let's, we got Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my remarks will be brief. I want to thank the leadership of, Lord. The City of Gladstone, thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Synapse laps. I want to thank the City of Gladstone's leadership for being flexible and allowing us this opportunity to work through these issues and giving us that time to bring all the players to the table and get all of the concerns that people have addressed as we go forward. They didn't have to do that, but they were willing to do so, and I think that they should be commended for that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Kathleen Drain and Ben Bryant. Hi, thanks for coming. Just tell us who you are and where you live.
I am Kathleen Drain. I am an unincorporated resident in the Sandy area, and I have been speaking with Mr. Savis in detail, but have also been submitting material to the commissioners, trying to stress the importance that any amendment, if there is one to the master order, be as limited as possible to achieve the Oak Grove and, we hope, Gladstone combined libraries, because that seems like a very good idea, that solution, but that it be done so that no other libraries' funds would be siphoned off for capital purposes. I think it is achievable. I am very grateful for the time that has been granted now to permit this more particular attention to this issue. It was being very broadly addressed initially, but I think we can bring it back to a point where the ideals and hopes from 2008 are maintained, and finally, the Oak Grove and Gladstone libraries get their new structures. Given that we're in this state of flux right now, I don't know that I need to say anything more, but if you have a question, I'm available.
I read your material this morning, I guess, an email. My only, my only concern is that we can't tell city councils how to run their budgets. That's not our...
No one's asking them to.
We don't have an ability to do that.
Not asking you to. The master order says that it shall be used for services. As long as the funds are used for services, everybody is in compliance. So, it is really merely a matter of reviewing to see whether there has been compliance. No one's asking anybody to do anything different than we had initially anticipated in 2008, and I think that spirit of 2008 is still valid and workable now, and I look forward to that being achieved.
Yeah, we do have, we, at least, we're pretty sure that some cities have used some of these monies to help supplement capital, and somehow, we have to kinda clean that up, and so this would be an opportunity to do that. I'd love to have the cities present that information to us, what capital they are using, or are they gonna be using it in the future, and we gotta know that. We don't have the ability to audit them, so we're gonna have to trust that they're gonna, you know, supply us the information we need.
Well, you could audit them as the library district if you grant yourself that authority in the amended order.
Well, we do do audit annually of the district. An outside auditor audits them.
Yeah, it's the comprehensive annual financial report for the district that we do do. And it's also true, too, that, you know, each and every municipality is responsible for conducting its own annual audit of its own finances and producing its own comprehensive annual financial report as well, so.
Yeah.
Which...
Yeah, I won't add comment to that.
I will take...
There were some communities that didn't.
If I may take my last 50 seconds. The question of past performance by others should not be conjoined necessarily at this time with simply solving the Gladstone/Oak Grove issue.
I agree.
So, I would hope that we keep the focus right now on the one issue and then look long-term to the solution of the other issue.
Yeah, I think in the, in the task force, which I totally think is a great idea, we've got to set some timelines on it, but we do have communities such as Milwaukee that has to build a new library, and they're limited on who they can tax, and how can we perhaps address that? But that's a topic of discussion at another meeting, so we'll definitely have that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Bernard and members of the commission. I'm Ben Bryant, Assistant City Manager of Happy Valley. At the risk of providing some comments that you just said maybe were for a better meeting, I wanna provide a little bit of context, and I hope you had a chance to review the letter from Mayor Chavez to Reamern, in case not. I'll go over a few things. First, let me just say that the Happy Valley Library provides some of the most important services in our community, and our library director does a fantastic job in ensuring our team meets the needs of our patrons in a cost-effective manner. Operating a library is much more than buying books and providing programs. It's critical that we maintain a safe and welcoming building with also an eye on the future. Undoubtedly, community growth, technological advances will necessitate changes to the building, so too does proper maintenance. Those take considerable resources, and the challenge becomes, how do we fund those changes and that maintenance? Similar to other libraries, you mentioned Milwaukee. Happy Valley, the library serves a much greater service area than just the city. In fact, the library service area for Happy Valley is 55,000 people, only 20,000 of whom are in the city. We're only able to provide service to that larger area because of the resources that we get through that larger service area and that allocation. And it's for these reasons that we're very supportive of allowing those dollars to be used for capital purposes. You know, it'd be inequitable to solely use taxpayer dollars from that 20,000 folks for a building that serves that 50,000 population. We understand and acknowledge there are a lot of concerns of having a more permissive master order, and we welcome those conversations, and we're excited to be part of those future task force meetings that you may have. So, thank you for allowing us to provide that context and look forward to those meetings.
Great, thank you very much.
I do have a, I just wanna make one comment to Mr. Bryant, and that is, I'm happy to sit down with yourself and the mayor, whoever it may be, and explain at least the one concept, which is kinda like embedded in the agreement with Gladstone about concept B, which is really the ability, possibly through an agreement, where the county could write in the agreement the ability to form a capital district to do that, so you can actually get revenues from those other 30,000 people outside the city. So, I would look, this is very confusing, and this is very complex, and I'm sure that we can, we can actually craft this in a way that would actually be able to achieve a library, you know, for, you know, for a town that needs one. Of course, you have a brand-new library, congratulations, and it's a great structure, but I think there's a mechanism there that addresses that. But there's one thing I do wanna say is that I think we realize, or the number of folks are realizing, that there's very limited resources in three dash three-ten, or the monies generated from that really aren't adequate typically enough to fund or inoperate a library completely. Sometimes they need a little bit augment, money's augmented from the cities, and that was by design. It wasn't supposed to solely fund it. But it does strike fear in those libraries that are threatened currently for funding, who can't even meet their operating expenses today when those monies are looked at for other purposes, when they're already at risk of not meeting their operating expenses today. So, just, it's something that we need to reconcile and find a way to achieves what the cities want to achieve in the future without threatening these limited dollars.
Couldn't agree more, and we are encouraged by that, the first part of your comments, that approach of looking at how we can fund future expansion. The one, I guess, unknown that we have is what is considered capital expense, right? So, do we need to form that district for building repair and maintenance, when we need to do a big roof replacement or something like that? So, I think having those conversations and defining that, what is a capital expense, we look forward to.
I think we have a great opportunity now that we can actually talk about the agreement and the, and the master order all in one.
All in one.
And have a conversation that actually achieves that clarification.
Great, thank you very much. Grover? Just wanna say before Grover says anything that, you know, I, my first experience as mayor of Milwaukee was the budget, because I think they did it quite early, and the budget proposal was to cut library funding, and huge crowds. We never cut the budget, and I think that's represented here, that, you know, there's great concern, great love of the library and the importance to the community. I mean, we used to call it the living room until the farmer's market came along, and then we called it the living room. But, anyway, Grover, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Grover Bornfeld, and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County in the area known as Jennings Lodge, and very short history, so I was a guy who commuted a lot for work and have lived in this area for 26 years, and then I stopped commuting and got involved, and the first thing I did was get on my local CPO board, and then I got on the library board, and how hard could that be? So, in July of 2015, I began to discover some of the things that were afoot, and yes, we did have an opportunity to reach out to y'all, some of you weren't here then, but the y'all that are still here, and, and others, to create a community involvement in the number of things that are important to us. So, I really wanna appreciate that in March of 2016, this body took, took action to start to put things right, and I really want to, more than anything else, say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, and thank you, for the remarkable responsiveness that has occurred that is so different than the past that I knew here, and so thank you all for doing that. It is, for me, I love that you have the Performance Clackamas as a guideline. I read it practically daily, and I believe you all are quite attuned to it as well, and there's so much opportunity, particularly given the way the rest of our world and country is looking, that we locally can do things where people work together. So, thank you for doing that. The second thing I wanna speak to is, I really appreciate the responsiveness to give us time. I really appreciate the opportunity to have a task force of those who are interested and knowledgeable to be able to, I didn't mean to not thank you, by the way, thank you too.
I was wondering.
I know you. Sorry, Chris. But to be able to come together and do that, because the settlement agreement actually represents, I'm glad it was brought up, it's nearly 50,000 people. So, it's, it's a, it's a large population who has a significant library need, and it is underserved. Little plug, also, I'll see you guys tonight. We also have a park issue that's underserved as well, and, but I just so appreciate the direction, so that's all I really wanna do. I don't have more to talk about. Oh, I do have one more thing. So, Monday night is the next Library District Advisory Committee meeting, and about the tracking, I also wanna really acknowledge the shift in LDAC. The first time I showed up in an LDAC meeting, it didn't look at all like three-three-ten said it should've, and it's getting, it's getting working, people are getting trained up, and I'm so pleased, this will be our first time to go through the draft of the new reporting document that will require each library that receives library district funds to report in a way that shows everybody in common apples-to-apples format where the money's going and how it's being used. So, I think putting those two things together, we will be able to honor the intent of the voters, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. I think one thing that we ought to consider in the task force is moving around the county a little bit. Because we have folks in Sandy who have to come down here, and, you know, it'd be great if maybe we did it at the libraries, you know, it makes sense, just to move around the county, so, because we don't necessarily have to film this, so I think we could move around the county and get a lot of, a good opportunity, see how libraries are being run around the county, and then have those meetings there so people can share in the burden of driving, just so it's not in downtown Portland.
Thank you. That's not a bad idea. I didn't, I didn't really think of that, so I appreciate that. And to tag that with, with what Mr. Bornfeld had just mentioned, I think that I might give an opportunity for every city to bring forth and talk about their budgetary constraints or opportunities and so forth, so we can all learn more about that and make sure that we're being sensitive to the needs of the cities and the constituents and come up with a solution. And I think the Milwaukee example's a good one. Milwaukee will put a ballot measure out there to pass funds for, to fund their library expansion, and they, and they serve an area greater than the size of their city, similar to what Mr. Bryant was speaking to, but they couldn't get the means to get the funding from that, that area. This capital district, which is really the Estacada model, this capital district option of being there would, would actually serve that purpose and give assurances that in the future, when those needs arise, if there's doubt about that, or maybe, maybe re-ruffing the library is eligible use of operations and maintenance money, because maintenance is maintenance and re-ruffing is re-ruffing, but if, maybe it exceeds the amount or the ability for the city to actually do that. And so, there's still a means by, by which this capital district could make some of those capital improvements and not, not leverage or harm those funds that we so cherish for operations and maintenance.
Great, any other discussion on this item? Oh, Ken and council, Ken first.
From what I've heard from folks, from my colleagues, from emails that I've received, I sort of distilled it down to three basic principles. I'm sure there are other related principles involved in this, but as, as the task force goes forward, I see three basic objectives here that we want to accomplish. One is clearly, the libraries are concerned about any loss of operating revenue, and we wanna make certain that they are kept whole with respect to operating revenue. Secondly, there's clearly the principle, the cities have a right to operate their budgets and deal with capital issues without our interference. So, that principle, I think, is a principle that needs to be adhered to in this process. And then the last is, we all have this objective of building two new libraries, and let's not lose sight of that fact. We have underserved areas, and it's about time, both in library services as well as park services, quite frankly, it's about time we stepped up and saw that those underserved areas got better service. So, if we can follow those three basic principles, as we have the negotiations on the task force, I think we can accomplish this, and again, I thank the City of Gladstone for giving us the time to work this through. Thank you.
Chris?
I just, I don't know what it is about that term. Commissioners, I, hearing your conversation and deliberations, I just wanted to offer some procedural notices to you. One, just to remind you, you are sitting as the Board of the Library District, so you had an item before you, I would suggest that you would vote to table it. It sounds like your interest is accepting the offer that Mr. Krupp wisely solicited from the City of Gladstone. They have expressed an interest in amending the settlement agreement, which sets forth the timeline. I did want to identify to you that that's a concept. You will actually see a draft and then have to take action at a business meeting to formally amend that settlement agreement before those terms are official, but it sounded like there's an intention of the parties towards that approach of allowing more time. So, the action today would be a table. You will see a subsequent action later to amend the settlement agreement, and as we talk through the task force and your concepts, I will note from a legal perspective, as we shift the settlement agreement, the necessity of the master order going before the IGA could drop, and you can have those conversations simultaneously, such that both documents could be made to be negotiated or discussed simultaneously, such that they will look the same and be in harmony when action is finally agreed to and taken.
So, on that, on that, I move that we table the board order amending the library district master order.
Second.
Been moved in second, and Martha?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to just say a few words, because I worked with George Hoyt back on this issue in 2008, and we worked very hard to get this passed, and I'm here today because I was a young mother in Canby, and the library was inadequate. It was in the basement of a retail building, and I felt very strongly that I wanted my children to have a larger public space where the space for the programming was available, where the space for the different media that, that we use was there, and so that's actually how, why I'm a commissioner today, really, was to start with libraries. So, my message to folks is this, it was 2008 when this was passed. We need to relook at this. We need to be flexible as we move forward with this, because the eye on the prize is service delivery to folks within cities as well as the unincorporated areas. Just constantly keep that in mind, because one of the things that I remembered when I first got started, it really wasn't the fact that we didn't have the services or the programming, we actually didn't have the space. So, it's kind of a chicken-and-egg kind of scenario here that we're dealing with. So, we passed it in 2008, and I will give George full kudos for that, because you were the one that managed the campaign with Jan, remember? And it was a phenomenal effort after multiple tries to try and find a solution in library services in this county since before, in the, in the 1980s, I remember, working on this issue, for example, as a young mother. So, I hope the task force remains flexible. Please keep the eye on the prize, that it, it is not just about operations, that's an important piece of it, but libraries also are the heart of the community, and I believe that they should be the most beautiful structures that any community has, because it's a space where people come to meet, to read, to access information. It is the bedrock, I've said this many times before, of democracy in this country, where anyone can get any piece of information they want. And Andrew Carnegie, as you know, who was the, I think he was a steel, I think I've talked about him before, made it his life's work as someone who made quite a bit of money, because he felt that he had gotten his start by having free and open access to libraries, and he wanted to make sure that this opportunity was actually provided across the United States of America, and I see Carol nodding her head, because you will see a Carnegie library here in Oregon City that was just expanded. So, I'm just gonna ask people, don't get, let's not get so worried about operations versus structure, let's just figure it out, and we are gonna have to work with our cities, the unincorporated areas. We have 16 cities in this county, and we're gonna have to somehow bring them into the fold, and we're gonna have to continue to pressure them to really hold up an end of the bargain where they also contribute to the library system, not only for the welfare in their citizens, but for all of you folks in the unincorporated areas. So, this is just a value statement from me. I look forward to the work, and I'm sure with the intelligence and integrity that we have in this room that we'll figure it out.
Great, all right, with that, oh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, the motion, this issue is table for further discussion. All right, thank you very much, and I hope you'll stay for the Wendy, I gotta get...
Lighting district?
The lighting show. The most illuminating part of the show.
Yes. And first, I wanna announce that we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Service District Number Five for the next item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Wendy Coriel, who's the manager of our Service District Number Five, our Street Lighting Service District, and she's here to present to you nine assessment area formations to go through, and I understanding is, we'll be able to handle these all in one motion, is what I understand as well, so we'll go through the presentation. I'm tempted to sing a tune about the midnight special, shining an everlasting light on me.
Yeah, I know you're tempted, but don't.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good day, Joe.
It's usually on the screen. Okay, I'm Wendy Coriel, representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five, which is the agency responsible for street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and the City of Happy Valley. Street lighting is required as conditions of approval through residential, commercial, industrial, multifamily developments and within the urban county of Clackamas County and City of Happy Valley. Street lighting can also be installed through those areas, through the district's petitioning process. Today, we have, oh, back to that, we have nine areas before you. Four are in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County, and five are in the City of Happy Valley. The first area for your consideration is Area 24-15. This is a 17-lot subdivision on Highway 224. We'll be installing shoebox lights and poles. This'll come under rate H at $91.88 per tax lot each year. Next three items for your consideration are 21-16. This is a three-lot partition on Idleman Road. 40-16, this is Pleasant Valley Villages Phase One, 119-lot subdivision. And then 54-16, which is also Pleasant Valley Villages, but Phase Two, this is 898-lot subdivision. We'll be installing Westbrook lights and poles, and this'll come at a rate W at $245 per tax lot each year. These are all in Happy Valley.
Is this built yet?
Not yet.
800 units, wow.
Yes, platted. Lot of, lot of lots and a lot of construction going on in the district. Okay, this next area is Area 10-17. It's a three-lot partition, and this is on Hill Road. We'll have Cobra lights added to existing wood poles, and this'll come under rate B for $50.01 per tax lot each year. Next area is Area 53-17. This is a seven-lot subdivision on Southeast Rupert Drive. This'll have Cobra lights on fiberglass poles. These'll come under rate C at $70.12 per tax lot each year. And then the last areas for your consideration, these three areas are 20-16, and this is an addition... an addition to an existing funeral home, forget how many funeral home. 35-16, this is a 16,000-square-foot light industrial building on 82nd Drive. And then 18-17, the Clackamas Fire District will be building one new building and remodeling a second building. We'll be doing Cobra lights on fiberglass for these projects, and these will come under rate D, and that's at $1.25 per frontage foot per tax lot each year. And there are no remonstrances received on any of these projects. And that concludes my presentation.
Are all these lights LED?
The majority of them are. Not all lights in the district are capable of going LED, but any Cobra and Westbrook-style lights currently in the district, along with brand-new Acorn-style, are LED-compatible.
Okay.
And all new installations are going LED for those styles of lights.
Commissioners have clarifying questions? I'll open a public hearing, ask if anyone wishes to testify on this matter. Oh, here we go. Last. You have an hour.
You know, I felt that it was my civic duty. Actually, Wendy doesn't get a lot of public testimony. I apologize, my throat's a little weak from not feeling well, but obviously, I approve of this. At $92 a year, they take care of it when the light burns out. You don't have to climb the pole and replace the light in front of your house. I just want to say a couple of things. One is, it makes common sense that we have streetlighting required in, in new construction, new subdivisions. And recently, through a lot of hard work by citizens and by the county, we've seen the streetlights going in on McLaughlin, the streetlight program. I'm a big advocate for streetlights. And sometime in the future, when Wendy's not busy doing everything else she's doing, it'd be great to have her do just a quick presentation because in the existing neighborhoods, there's a way to get there. And every time I drive down Oatfield Road in the dark, I get to Jennings', and there's streetlights on Oatfield. Between Jennings and north of, or south of there at the Gladstone line, where Jennings makes a big turn, there's absolutely no lighting. And I'm not, I'm getting a little bit in the weeds here, but it would be great for the public to understand the other side of what you do, which is, how do we get lighting and safety everywhere? Because without it, just, next time the power's out at night, go outside, take a look around. You'll suddenly have a great appreciation for the streetlighting district. So I'm certainly for this, and thanks for your time.
Well, thanks. I live in a rural community. I very much appreciate the fact that there aren't lights.
You mean both.
Yeah. The one, one thing is, is that if, if I live in a neighborhood and I want lights and everyone agrees to them, they can get them, right?
That is correct. The district's petitioning process, and all they have to do is contact me, and we'll analyze the area and see if it qualifies for a petition.
Yeah, well, great. Well, with that, we'll close the public portion and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the items one through nine under Service District Number Five board orders.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then next, oh, we will now reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. The next item is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing and Community Development Division and the Colton Water District for the Virgil Road Waterline Project in Colton. We have approval of Agreement Number 17-18530 with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. Approval of an agency service contract with Clackamas County Children's Commission for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Services District for focused childcare networks. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Services District for kindergarten partnership and innovation services. Approval of an agency service contract with Metropolitan Family Service for Family Resource Coordination. Approval of an agency service contract with Metropolitan Family Services for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. Approval of an agency service contract with Northwest Family Services for Family Resource Coordination. Approval of an agency service contract with Totos Hutos for Family Resource Coordination. Approval of an agency service contract with Toto Hutos for Kindergarten Partnership Innovation Services. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Professional, Technical, and Personal Service Agreement with the Living Room for Youth, Young, Adult Peer Support Services. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Professional, Technical, and Personal Service Agreement with Stay Clean for Peer Support Services. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for Public Health Modernization with a Communical Disease Program. Approval of Personal, Professional Services Contract with Folk Time Inc. for Peer Support Services at the Riverstone Crisis Clinic for the Safety Net Program. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas River Water for the use of a temporary construction easement related to the Clackamas River Bridge Construction Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of a resolution appointed justices of the peace pro tem for Clackamas County Justice of Peace District. Under Technology Services, approval of an amendment to the service level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the State of Oregon for fiber lateral. And under County Council Authorization to enter into a contingent fee contract with Demore Law Group, Whaley Law Group, and the Law Office of Thomas L. Young to evaluate, initiate opioids litigation. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
I think we should take each one of these items individually. That was a good job. Did you even breathe?
A smidgen there.
Okay. Any Commissioners wish to remove Paul and I from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, yeah. Wait.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Wait. Well, that's, is there a second?
Second.
We moved in second to approve the consent agenda. And Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, there are many, we heard Kevin read through the list, there are many items on this consent agenda focusing on children, readiness for school, early childhood. And I just couldn't miss the opportunity to just recognize how incredibly important this is for our community. And so thankful that we have such good staff and implementing these programs and working for the, what really matters is the future generations. And we do a lot. And we don't talk a lot about that in our public hearings. We don't have people coming on Citizen Communication to mention it. It's on a consent agenda. Kevin did a great job reading it, but very, very important services. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Appreciate that. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we have county administrator updates.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of items. The first, I want to relay to you information about our Water and Environment Services Department. They've been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is a nonprofit organization that represents some 19,000 governmental officials and financial practitioners. The award represents a significant achievement for West as it reflects their continuing commitment to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. And Water and Environment Services satisfied what are nationally recognized guidelines for an effective budget presentation to earn this award. And I just wanted to give kudos to the great staff over there at Water and Environment Services for the outstanding work they do. The second item I have involves our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Program. We've got some great 2017-year-end numbers. Last year, our event coordinators throughout the county, we borrowed a whole host more of our recycling containers for the program than we ever have before. And in total, we had some 1,006 recycling containers that were placed across 89 events that included things like the county fair, the Pickathon Music Festival, and a number of other farmers' markets alongside garbage containers. And borrowing the recycling containers really did a great job in helping to reduce waste and to redeem beverage deposits to fund similar activities from the department. So a great job to our staff in resource conservation and solid waste. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, wow, I actually have a lot to report. I was glad that Commissioner Fisher mentioned children and families today because this morning at our Clackamas Workforce Partnership Meeting, we had a presentation about building healthier families while, while building a healthier economy. So our workforce board, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, collaborates with Head Start, Early Head Start, and Healthy Families, which are programs here of the Clackamas County Children's Commission. And basically, what it does is reach out to low-income parents who's with, who are working, whose children are in these programs, to also get them into services and opportunities for training or education. So the community college in Clackamas helps them development, helps them develop training plans that will lead to employment in high-demand fields and connects participants to the support they need, which includes childcare. And the reason why this is important is because what we found out was, when parents are needing these services for their children, oftentimes, you know, they're working in jobs or they're underemployed, that they need that kind of help up to get them better connected so they can actually prosper. And one of the unique things that they do once a month, the cohorts of these working parents actually get together with an employment support group meeting at the college. And this is really, you know, a result of a grant, actually, that Clackamas Workforce Partnership got from Care at Oregon with $94,000, $94,000, and it covers childcare while the JobSmart participants go to work, school, and required meetings. And so I have a pamphlet here, and there's an, I'll send it, pass it off, you know, pass it down to my colleagues. And there's a number of stories of folks who have actually benefited already from these collaborations. So very cool. We're really working on it. Let me pass it this way. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was tourism because I had an opportunity to travel over Christmas and New Year's. And I brought this back, and I'm hopeful our Tourism Development Agency will give me a little bit of time to talk about what, what this model is. It was absolutely fantastic. It's really a family-based model at Chilaze throughout Europe, run by Esprit, number one for family skiing. And what's nice about it is the children get daycare, they get skiing lessons, they have communal meals with all the families. It was one of the best experiences I've had going someplace else. And it's an amazing model that I, I really would like to see the Mount Hood territory, see if we can't somehow duplicate it because it was just a fantastic, fantastic way to watch my grandchildren learn how to ski, since I will be nothing else but, but a beginner. And the mountains there were gorgeous, obviously, but I am biased towards the Mount Hood territory and Mount Hood, so I'd like to see us, I'm going to pass this to my colleagues as well. Really interesting. Other than that, Ken and I, Commissioner Humberson and I, met with the Secretary of State Dennis Richardson yesterday because we're, we're working on continuing those relationships with China for a trade mission again. And I think we're getting word that Guanyin County is, seems pretty interested in opening a restaurant out here in Clackamas County. So we're actually, hopefully, going to be bringing some actual business in here. And I'll let, Ken, I'll let you expound on that a little bit more when it's, when it's your time up. And finally, arts and culture activities in the county. Mary's Woods, 2018, music in the woods, a mighty wind. Music for every wind instrument in the orchestra, solo duet, five at a time. You name it, including the splendid sextet of Francis Pulnok. The chameleon winds, led by flutist Abby Madges. You'll be blown away. January 21st, 2:00 p.m., Chapel of the Holy Name, Mary's Woods Provincial House. Grand opening of Life and Death in the Oregon Territory, coinciding with the 175th anniversary of the Oregon Trail migration. This January, the Museum of the Oregon Territory is unveiling its new exhibit, Life and Death in the Oregon Territory, following Oregonians from the cradle to the grave. On Saturday for the grand opening, attendees receive free admission, drinks, and refreshments. That will be Saturday, January 20th, regular hours at 1:00 p.m. and regular hours Wednesdays through Saturdays, 10:30 to 4:30 at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. And if you want more information about the arts, go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, well, I, you know, whether it was this morning, the crowd we had this morning or some issues, or whether it is things that are going on in people's neighborhoods and all the vast array of the services and things that we get ourselves involved in, someone asked me, well, how was your weekend the other day? I said, well, actually, I spent the holiday weekend on either face-to-face meetings or talking to folks about the issues that were all library stuff, McLaughlin stuff. And I was on the phone last night. I got the phone at about 10:15, 10:30 last night. I got off the phone, and I realized that my wife, I never really saw my wife last night, but I know that she went to bed. And I, I should be able to see her tonight after the NCPRD meeting, I think. But the point of the matter is, I realized that, and yesterday's fair board meeting was no exception, that, you know, there is someone on the other end of the phone, and they're volunteering their time as well. And I just want, I've said this before, but it just always strikes me how passionate our citizens are and our volunteers are about things that are important about their community. And it's really, frankly, at the core of it, it's really about making our community better. And I, and I just feel, you know, so honored, actually, to be in the position to be able to help. And that's, I guess, the reward, one of the rewards of being a county commissioner. And I guess, again, the point of the matter is that they care, and you saw today, they care. And it doesn't matter what the issue is. And that's, that's really great. It just makes our community stronger. I just want to acknowledge them. And of course, I always make a plug for search and rescue folks that are making that effort. And really, at the, at sometimes, at the most difficult times of weather, when the weather's the worst, or it's the holiday season, they're making substantial sacrifices. So I'm hoping that we can also, in the future, do something to, to help them with some facilities, however that is. But just a big thank you to all our volunteers.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. I've been thinking a lot about health, healthy families, healthy kids, a growing economy, the intersection of both. Today is the last day to get your ballot in by mail for Measure 101, and I don't know how that's going to come out at the ballot box. I think it's important that people vote, that they weigh in on it. I do know that one in four Oregonians receive Medicaid, and if this does not pass, it's going to be an incredible challenge for our legislature. I bring this up because we are the county government. We are the last stop. We are the entity that deals with the problems that really nobody else wants to deal with. We are the last stop. And I want us to be thinking about the importance of our residents. I want us to think about what it means if you don't have healthcare. We now have 95% of our residents have healthcare. If the legislature doesn't figure this out, we are going to be struggling, our residents are going to be struggling. I think part of the reason why our economy is growing so well is that so many of our residents are covered with healthcare, and we don't, they don't have that worry. So very concerned about that and on the lines of that, because we have this vote that's coming up. It's January 23rd. Today's the last day to mail. You can always drop off your ballots. But the other piece is, we've been dealing a lot with, what is the will of the voters? We have it with the library issue for the measure that was passed in 2008. We're dealing with our policy session yesterday with what did the voters intend for the tourism council? And what is the authority of county government relationship to the tourism council? And so I just want to say, what the voters tell us, how they inform us, is very, very important. Get out and vote. Don't let that ballot sit there on your, on your, if it's on your kitchen counter, get it in, either deliver it to, a lot of libraries have drop-off sites, deliver it or put it in the mail today. So that's my message.
Great. Commissioner Humberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a busy, busy week. I met actually last week with the Hoodland, Hoodland Women's Club regarding their efforts to form a Parks District in the Hoodland area. They are working on that, and we were able to give them some assistance and some guidance on how that process will go forward. They're probably going to try and put it on a ballot in 20, November of 2020. It could be sooner than that, but I think that's going to be their target. It could be sooner than that, but I think that's going to be their target date. And if they're successful in establishing a district and a, and a rate of taxation to fund the district, there'll be properties that we will be transferring to them, such as the Old Dormin property, among others, for them to establish a local park. I've attended a couple of Senator Wyden's town halls. I have to say, it's one of the better town halls I've been to, because he doesn't just spend forty-five minutes speaking and then leave, and take ten minutes worth of questions, maybe. He spends his time answering questions. Gives a very brief start, and then he answers questions from the audience. I think that's a great process. People really get an opportunity to ask the questions that are important to them, to their senator. We recently, yesterday, had our Fair Board retreat. I was really pleased with the outcome of that. I think we've made a lot of progress in resolving some of the past issues with the Fair Board. Clearly, they are moving ahead with their master plan and business plan. I think we're doing a good job of recognizing what they need to do and, and the volunteer efforts that they make, and they're doing a good job of recognizing the concerns that we have regarding our capital investment in, in the fair facilities, and I think that that bodes well for how we go forward together. They will be having a similar mediation with their rodeo board, as they have some issues between those two boards, and I have asked both of the presidents to put, put that together, and they'll be working with our mediation services to do exactly the same thing and work out their issues. Last night, I attended the Western Economic Alliance Meeting over in Lake Oswego. Interesting to hear the legislators' perspectives on some of the issues coming up in the state. And then I went to a CCA meeting, of all places, at Hyrox Cafe, where there was a presentation by PG, PGE, on their efforts of fish preservation and increasing the flow of fish stock in the Clackamas River. They've made a lot of progress with their new technologies and whatnot like that.
CCA?
What's CCA?
CCA?
Citizens are formed and aware?
Oh, it's, no.
No, that's the CIA.
I forget what the acronym stands for, but it basically is the Steelhead Folks.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, so it's a fish.
And they've worked with PGE on some of the new technologies that they're using to, to increase the fish flow in the Clackamas River, and it looks like those efforts are paying off, because all of a sudden, they're seeing a real spike in the increase of adults returning to spawn. In fact, areas where for ninety years there have been no Chinook, all of a sudden, they're getting Chinook salmon spawning.
Chinook.
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 So that's, that's, that's some progress on that front. And on January twenty-seventh, twenty-eight, the Collector's West Gun and Knife Show will be at the fairgrounds, for those who are interested in that. And for those who would like to keep track of what goes on at the Event Center in Canby, you can go to www.clackamas.us/fare. And they retain a, a list of all of the different events that, that are going on all year long. If nothing else, if you don't remember that, just go and Google Clackamas County Event Center, and that will get you there, so you can find out what goes on on a regular basis. And finally, the dog. So, this is Clementine. He is an energetic and bold fifteen-year-old lab mix who's looking for a forever friend to fill his days with love and adventure. He loves getting petted and going for walks, even though he needs to work on his leash skills. While he may not like every dog, he might like to meet one you bring to the shelter for introductions. Come here and spend some time getting to know him. He does not like to share his food, so he'll need an adult-only home. If you are looking for a good companion, please go and visit Clementine today. For more information about Clementine and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at five oh three, six five five, eight six two eight, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
I'm confused why he needs an adult home, because he doesn't like to share his food.
They're afraid that the children might eat the dog food.
Oh, they're, they're afraid, like, like my, like my lab is they follow the kids around snatching food.
That's all I can figure.
That's what's going on.
I just read this script, I don't write it.
So, I think that we should call you the mountain man, because you, you spend a lot of time up at the mountain. You know, we used to divide the county, we tried this for a while, I thought it was fairly successful. We divided the county into five sections, and we all took a section, and then we rotated, or we at some point attempted to rotate. I don't know that we actually did rotate. I know I had the mountain one for a few times.
We rotated, we actually got a pretty good reception from that, and I think it was the previous commission didn't seem to have much interest in doing that.
Yeah, I enjoyed it. I spent most of my time at the mountain, I had all that area up there. But, speaking of the mountain, and the brochure you handed out, you know, we have an outstanding asset that is totally underutilized. I mean, you go anywhere in the country where they have a mountain like we have, and it's underutilized. One of the things that is taking place is an exchange. Mount Hood Meadows does not have the ability to build housing. They're exchanging a portion of, I think it's called Cloud Cap, for a piece of real estate in, in government camp, which will allow some redevelopment, but it's also an opportunity to look at connecting the various assets, government camp, Timberline, Mount Hood Meadows together, and recreating or redevelopment of a great asset that is so underutilized that might require a tram that would connect them all. But one of the, so that's really exciting. I think that, you know, there's a great opportunity, many communities are doing that, but the, also, another issue is the lack of workforce housing. I talked to the, the person, Mount Hood Meadows folks about workforce housing up on the mountain. A lot, there's actually people camping in the woods around up there, some living in their cars, some in tents, and, and some, you know, just have no place else to go unless they drive to Portland, and that contributes to traffic issues and the impact on our roads. So, I, they're interested in talking about workforce housing, and I think that's something we need to do. We also, of course, had our meeting, which some people have mentioned, with the Fair Board. I, I thought it was very productive, and we also had a meeting with tourism, and we got a ways to go on that one. But it was, it was a, it was a pretty one-sided conversation, if you think about it. We, we had the tourism folks sitting in the audience, and our lawyers talking to us, when actually tourism paid half. Why weren't they at the table? But they, I think we're going to agree to something similar to what we did with the Fair Board.
We need to do a retreat.
Yeah, do a retreat and sit down and just work it out. But we also need to talk a little bit more, I'm going to meet, I've actually, I'm requesting to meet with members of tourism, and to talk about what's the best approach? Do we want to look at a Berman, bring him back? Or do we want to look at an outside council? Or do we want to just try the, the retreat? And in what, what order or any order? So, I want to find that out, because there's some budgetary issues on a couple of them, and we just need to work all that out. But I think that we got to remember that they're our partners, and like you said, they're volunteers, just like all our other committees. But one, I want, one really important thing, I mean, if you look at that brochure, you think about tourism revenues have tripled.
Right.
And there are no new assets. That means there are no new hotels, there are no new resorts. So, part of that's collection, I think the county's stepping up in the collection of those resources. The other is that we're collecting taxes for, well, Airbnb, we're trying, but we don't actually allow them in county code. So, we need to address that issue, and you know, the problem is, Mike's very busy, and maybe we talk to tourism about hiring an outside expert to move that forward, I don't know. But those are the other things that we need to talk about. There's a lot of revenue out there which could help grow this great resource we have that we're not collecting.
Yeah.
That we actually don't allow, so it's a problem.
And Chair, can I make, I don't want to, I want to make one last comment. When you look at that, the most remarkable thing is, as you mentioned, every area is connected. You can literally get on a gondola and go from one mountain to another, to another. And we have an opportunity at Mount Hood, if we can get our ski operators on the same page with one pass, you could literally, you know, the niche that is there is, I think, underutilized at this point, especially after seeing that.
It's kind of a long way, though, from Mount Hood to the Sisters, don't you think?
Well, I'm talking about Mount Hood to Meadows, to Kirkana, to all the, all the players there. You know, the rising tide will raise all boats if they can come to some agreement about how each niche there is important.
They are actually sharing in the funding of that bus that's moving, and so, that, that's great, and it's the, you know, it's really picked up. A lot of people are using it, it's really cheap, especially Mount Hood Meadows, who has, well, I shouldn't say it, Timberline and Mount Hood Meadows have very limited parking, and so, partnership makes perfect sense. And, and they are working on that. And when that property exchange is completed, you know, you're going to have Mount Hood Meadows in government camp. It's a great opportunity to look at a tram, and I think the county should pay for it. I was just kidding.
We can, we can help facilitate.
Yeah, we can help facilitate the discussion and work on the land use opportunities that provide, because it's a, it's a beautiful area we need to protect, but we also should utilize that asset for the benefit of Clackamas County. Look, everybody else in the state uses Mount Hood.
As their icon.
On their brochures and everything. And some, some probably have Mount Hood tattoos, but we should utilize it as much as they are. Well, with that, we'll adjourn today's meeting, and we do have a library district board meeting, no, Parks District Board meeting tonight out at the Training Center, so we'll see you there.